To God, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Mirandi?
Here.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Vlado?
Here.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to our monthly meeting. Start with Larry's not here yet. He's on his way right here. So we'll move on without recommission.
I've talked with Ruth Gamble, with Robert and Mayor Mirandi about seasonal employee names this week. We have a list of pretty mowing things we really want to do and get cleaned up. So with supervision by both Bugsy and myself, we don't really get the Mayor's Park cleaned up around the fence. We're going to take care of the McConville Park leaves and any cleaning up that needs to be done there and get the bathrooms ready at Mayor's Park for baseball season and any other events we have coming. Electrical, Padala has been contacted to look at the electrical boxes at the 9/11 memorial and also determine a method to light the light pole at the bandstand because the light pole at the bandstand doesn't have a light on it. So we're gonna hopefully get that done within the next month. Mayor's Park fence and gate repairs. As you can see from the pictures there, Mayor's Park has, mostly Mayor's Park, has many fences that do not close, that don't latch. And as you can see from the picture way over on the right, actually, the top rail is off on several pieces of the fence, leaving open metal pieces there. So the John Mirandi had called some fence companies who do have quotes for repairing the fence. I just got these today for repairing the labor materials to fix the fences that need to be, that are there that need to be repaired for $1,300. A lot of that is that some of the fence posts are actually warped. They have to go and straighten them out, put new cement in and get them so that they can close. And carefully, if you can see the one there, that one was really useless. And someone put a big stone there, I guess, to keep it from. We met with the athletic staff. I had asked Jeff to put the Halley in agreement along with this, but I see it's not here.
It is there.
It is?
Back on page four.
Back on page four. Oh, I was. We looked at the dugouts and discussed whether or not we should have 20 by six, 20 feet by six-foot fences placed 36 inches in front of the dugouts. Both dugouts are open to the field. The only part that's not open, there is a piece of fencing on the sides closest to home base. But other than that, no. So we got another quote for that. We got a quote for them to put six fences in front of each one. It will be commercial grade galvanized steel. And the quote for that is $2,500 to put two protective fences there so that stray balls aren't going to hit any of those players.
So why would we be responsible?
I got the quote.
What's that?
I got the quote.
Oh, okay. Just asking.
From our meeting. And we can discuss whether or not who's responsible to pay it or.
You let me know when we can discuss that.
Yes.
If you will.
I will.
Continue.
That's why you have the Halley in agreement. Because it may.
I don't know if mine, somehow, I don't know where it is.
So it may be a good idea at some point because I see that this was done in 19, oh, 19, in 2017. I don't think it was 1917. I'm assuming it was 2017. So there are some areas here that maybe it's time to revisit this agreement and look at it for safety reasons, whatever.
Well, it says that Halley is gonna mow and cut the grass.
That's right.
And should they do that now?
Yes. Yes. And Bugsy and I are gonna ensure that during the baseball season, the only person who cuts the grass is the Halley staff. And our staff is to do other tasks, not mow the grass during baseball season.
Well, it's baseball, softball, and soccer and lacrosse.
Pardon me?
There are four seasons, baseball, softball, soccer, and lacrosse. That's what the agreement is.
They really, they only use it for baseball at this point. That's why we really need to revisit this. They use it for, they have two types of baseball. They have the regular high school varsity baseball team. And then they have.
Modified.
Thank you. Modified baseball. Simon Dujardin was the coach for that. So because another thing that they were looking at was to outside of the, on the pavilion side of the fence closest to first base, behind the dugouts, they wanted to put some pitching mounds there to have a more official bullpen. They've discussed with Sal Padala what it would be like to, what it would be to put pitch mounds in. In talking with athletic director, I said we needed more detail about the size, the place, and were these just during the baseball season? Were they gonna seed it afterwards? Is this the, whatever. So I don't have all the information. I told them I can't move forward until we have more information on pitching mounds. Okay, it's not Gigi ball, but maybe it could be Gaga ball. Just to call your attention, I think I forwarded it to the mayor that Amy Bennett, the resident, had contacted me as well as the Todd Park Committee about Gaga ball. And it's wanting to place one at McConville Park. If you've been to the Phillips Town Recreation, they have one in the field out there. That's called Gaga ball. It's a kid's kickball, you know? So it was, I told her that that would have to come directly to the trustees. So you may be hearing from her, but I just was letting you know ahead of time.
What does the Todd Park Association or whatever they're considered, what is their thoughts on that?
They sent them to me. They sent them to me. They have a specific, they would certainly, in talking to one of the Todd Park Committee, they would certainly be willing to give the person, the people who might want to do this, ideas of how they fundraise and how they do stuff. That this is, you know, this would be an installation, not inside the Todd Park. It would be outside the Todd Park. It's like the pitching mounds, you know? We're gonna get some information. We're gonna.
Well, the soccer, the soccer net that's been there for a couple of years.
Yes.
And the area in front where it used to be, there's no grass there anymore.
Yeah. Well, Bugsy and I have talked about the soccer net and the geodesic dome. And they were not officially placed there by anybody. It's like the, you know, little buggy cars that go into the, inside the Todd Park. Someone decided to put those there on their own. So I think we have to come to a decision whether or not they, we're gonna just say it's okay and they can stay there or whether they should be removed. So we can certainly, I mean, we certainly have to make a decision about that. If not, we know the first, it was the soccer net and then it was the geodesic dome. Because a lot of parents feel that there's nothing for kids over five to do at McConville Park. So.
I think one thing that would be good is people would go, like for the Gaga ball thing, it just seems like one of those things that people will use for a day or two and then could be just left there and not used a lot. You know, like swing sets in everyone's yards or little forts with slides in everyone's yard.
Do you know Gaga?
So I'd like to know where they have, where they're installed and we should do a little.
Yeah, there is one at the Phillips Town Rec. They have one in the field outside Phillips Town Rec. Steve, have you seen?
I don't even know what it is. I was just asking.
In the email that I forwarded to you, there's a picture of it. It's a wooden. All right, I'm gonna keep on going then. It's a wooden structure. People would build it and they were saying pressure-treated wood. So you know what? Because I know from dealing with the Todd Park that there's nothing in the Todd Park that's pressure-treated wood. So, you know, someone would have to work with them and see this.
If it's a ball and they want to be in McConville Park, it's gonna need to be fenced because the streets are.
No, it is. It's a wooden, they create, it's like a, it's like a huge sandbox. It's about four feet tall.
So if they kick the ball and it goes out in the street?
Yeah, the idea is you don't kick the ball. You kick the ball inside, hit somebody, and they're out of the game. Do you know about this game?
Yes. It's more like a corral, maybe.
A corral!
10-foot round and the kids, like six kids in there. It's almost like handball with a larger ball. Okay? And if it hits you in any way, you're out. And I do know in some grade schools, it is the hot topic. Because when I first heard about it, I was like, Lady Gaga? What? What?
Well, I call it Gigi too, so.
But it is in a corral, like you said, about four foot tall. And I agree, it may not be used all the time, but in certain, like schoolyards, recess, it's used a lot.
We'll look at it. Looking at it.
Her name, yeah, I told, I told them where to go. Any other questions?
Regarding the pitching mound, I'm definitely not for that. Not, not right outside that, outside the first baseline there. I mean, if they want to put it down in the corner or whatever and call somebody in like the pros, that would be fine. But it's right next to the pavilion. If they have it there, I just think it's encroaching on.
So you would rather it further down?
Yeah. They're all.
Give it off.
I don't know how anyone else feels about it. I don't think we're pros or need that. But if they really need one, I would put it down, down the line more. Two of them?
Well, it's distracting if you're at bat and someone's right there. If you're left-handed and someone's warming up right there, you wouldn't want that there.
Yeah, you gotta, I think you have to, you have to have two because one goes one way. The way they pitch pitches.
No idea. They didn't have those when I played baseball.
What?
They didn't have those when I played baseball.
But look what happened to you.
I turned out okay.
So in talking with the athletic director, I asked him if he's gonna present something that's gotta be further down though.
Well, that's my, I don't know how the rest of the board thinks.
It can be by the pavilion. It's crazy.
I just bet the pavilion side, so I wasn't, I didn't have to play around with him. He wants us to, if he wants it to be considered, it's gonna have to be further down. Give us more information about where further down and how big they are and.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you very much for your.
And as far as caging in, I mean, the dugouts are used exclusively by a baseball team and that's, they're the only ones that would need that there. I mean, even if softball came back or whatever, you don't really need a fencing there. So I would think that's their responsibility if they want to put that there.
They have to carry, have insurance.
What's that?
They have to cover the, they have to have the insurance for them. They're using, one of the, part of the agreement is they have to cover insurance to cover themselves when they're playing it in the park. So I guess they should look and see what their insurance company says that they should have.
Right.
And if they want to consider, I could tell what the code is and if they want to come to you or come to the school or whatever.
My feeling, it's something they need for their program, not necessarily for us and our recreation program. So.
Just the vehicle.
Thank you very much for the vehicle. Appreciate it.
I don't make the decisions.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make the decisions.
We're not getting done in 45 minutes, Ren. Planning board, I have Matt here. Would you like to?
Hello, Matt.
Yep. So we have, in front of us, we have 20 of the Boulevard, the Campbell property, they're in for a change of use, doing allowed use there in an R3. They want to have five rooms for rent as a tourist home.
Doesn't that make them a hotel?
Well, I think, I mean, in our code, everything actually rolls up to hotel. Right? You're right, a tourist home is two or less, right?
Yeah. Five is, I think, the definition of a hotel.
Yeah, it's two or less, right? Yeah. So but in, when you look at all the bulk requirements, it's all, you know, that everything rolls up to hotel.
But they would have to then conform to all of the New York State uniform code for hotels.
Yeah, so obviously, that would be on the building inspector.
The code enforcement.
Yeah. Yeah, for code enforcement, right.
Right. So square meters, light to degress, signs. I think you have to have a map in each room.
Yes, yeah, the New York State Code. It's light to degress, emergency lighting. I don't, I don't know that they've allowed for any of that.
Okay.
It seems to kind, I mean, the first I saw of this was an article in a magazine several months ago.
All right.
So they've just come before us. They're still under construction. So they're gonna come in, they're still workshopping. They're gonna come in tomorrow.
Construction?
Yeah. I mean, they're still finishing the interiors, I think.
Oh, okay. That's the original house?
I don't know. Probably both. Not sure.
Was there any, I didn't see, I just, I remember that Sina Hudson, when they came and they were talking about selling that property and that there were gonna be restrictions on it. And that's one thing they didn't want.
I just, I just got a copy of them. The clerk sent them to me. I said, I wanted to see the actual filed restrictions. Because I know that the way it works, if they, they are allowed to do, you know, they aren't allowed to do like a DMV, but they have to first get municipal, you know, the village approval and then go back to, obviously, the way these, but it works is that, you know, the conservation easement is, the one that holds it has to, has to maintain it forever, which is Sina Hudson. So they, I guess, have an annual review with Sina Hudson and then interim reviews that they, you know, for the work that they're doing. So, yeah, they have, they have to look at all of that. And there is, there was, it was, it was a pretty well-written, we had first gotten it in the planning board because they were gonna do a subdivision and then switch to a lot line adjustment, which made it more, less complicated for them. But we, at that point, we were reviewing the subdivision, the conservation easement with Sina Hudson before they marketed the property. And then we still have, to some degree, we have 21 parsonage in front of us, which is the planning board. The zoning board will probably, I would think eventually, possibly come back, ask the planning board about site plan comment. We've done informally site plan comment now twice. It's a new application, which is very similar to the old application from, you know, from a while back. New business, we have the Foodtown Shopping Plaza. They came in to workshop an updated site plan. They, they do have a few, they have a, they have one encroachment on village property that, the screen wall around the Foodtown loading dock, that was, that is on actually the approved planning board, 2003 plans. So that was actually shown, built onto what I presume is village property, right? The strip behind them. So when we spoke to Gus Rukus's son, who's now the property manager, who's gonna be dealing with, he wants to improve the property. He's got a little bit ahead of himself. He did a, I guess he removed the sheds, built a brick wall. He also built a fenced enclosure, which is on village property as well. So it seems like the tenant needs are kind of continuing to push outside the envelope of the property and the landlord is kind of accommodating them at the, you know, obviously on village property and then obviously to the detriment of like the people that live behind there. Although, he has really cleaned the place up. And I told him, I said, well, we appreciate what you're trying to do. You need to stop until we get the property line resolved and you have approval, you have building permit to build the wall and the fence are already built. So we'll have to revisit that. He's gonna come in tomorrow. One possible solution is if the village wants to either lease or sell him that strip of land that runs along back there. Obviously, he would still have to go for variances to, you know, to use it because there's not much of a setback. It would at least cure the one problem, which again, is on the filed site plan that was signed by Taggart back in 2003 for the planning board, that the, that screen wall comes quite a bit onto village property. The rest of it, the rest of the pad is all, looks to be inside. Although, to be honest, I have not seen a current survey. So I said, if this were to go any further, you'd have to get a new survey and present it to the village board and talk to you about whether or not you had any interest in either a lease or a, or a sale of that property. Obviously, with the understanding it isn't to build to the, you know, you still need a setback because obviously there are trucks traveling through there. And then the last thing, so is there any advice you'd like to give him other than to come see you or?
No, I'd just like to see the survey map so we know what we're really talking about.
Yeah, so he should go to the expense of a survey first?
Yeah.
Even to come in? Okay.
I think.
Is it, I mean, does anybody feel like it's a, it's a no and he shouldn't waste the money on a survey? Or would you like to spend the money for a survey and come in? It'd be good to have, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. The last is the.
Do we assume that everything from the back wall, aside from the loading dock, that the back wall is the end of his property?
You want to, you want to see the approved plans?
Oh, yeah. So that would show us.
Yeah. So, well, again, it's a hash mark on a drawing. It doesn't, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean it's the actual property line, but it's what's represented to be the property line. So it follows right along your edge. It's a blow up of the, of the plans. So this hash mark is what represents, what is presumed to represent the property line. So everything else is inside that but for the screen wall for the loading dock, where it's really a pad for Foodtown. And everything else is barely inside of it. Now, just past there, behind Angelina's, he had built an enclosure to enclose the grease trap. No, actually, on the other side, he built it outside. Yeah, down by the bank. You know, and that's, I told him, I said, we appreciate your, you know, your intent to really clean the property up and we do appreciate that, but you gotta wait until we, you know, until you get permits and.
And he's also got that roof, the canopy that, that the roof's out.
Oh, there's the refrigerator.
I have to, yeah, I have to take a look because it looked like it was cleaned up. But I, but I gotta take, I gotta do a full site. We're gonna make a site visit. He's gonna come in on Thursday night.
I'm guessing he's B2.
Yeah.
No, yeah, he's B2.
Yeah.
Yes. It's gotta be at least a 10-foot setback.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it would really just, it doesn't really do that much because you would still want to maintain it for a setback. And when we have trucks traveling through there, it's not a very wide street. If you were allowed, I would say that if you were allowed, you know, I would be concerned that somebody would give him a variance to go even further, somebody being our, the Southern Board of Appeals, obviously, if it was a good. But if that were to happen, you're getting really close to, you know, through traffic. And obviously, it's a tight, it's a tight site, you know, it's, even the way it was approved.
Well, the trucks can't come down that way.
Right.
So they, they have to back out, they back out into the other end of Marion.
Yeah, a lot of times, I guess, they use that unbuilt lot, which he's talking about building. So I think if we, if we were to do this, he really should show a truck turn radius to actually demonstrate how these trucks. We asked for it for Butterfield with the post office to say, you gotta show that they can actually turn around.
They can't.
Yeah.
They can't, the, they, they back up either into Benedict or into the other side. Jack lives on Marion.
And I heard they actually use the lot sometimes too. Some of the residents said, no?
I've never seen that.
The empty lot?
Along the lot.
Yeah, because he was talking about wanting to develop that lot as well. So I think they have to kind of show us a truck turn radius if they're, you know, to really sign up on a, on a correct site plan. And then the last thing we have is we've got, Butterfield is likely coming back in. I've been workshopping with them informally on Fridays. The condominium, they were approved for 55 senior housing units. They built out 49. They have parking for at least 55 underground. The first, the first wave of discussions were just to complete the condo in building number one on the second floor. And now they've come back and said that they really want to do rental senior housing. So obviously, that's a new project. Obviously, senior housing has its own set of requirements. It also has to have parking. I'll shoot you, Maria, an update on code update. Because I noticed too that we, while we applied the senior housing requirements over to the B4A, the B4A only allowed for a maximum of one-bedroom units with one parking space. So they were approved with two-bedroom units with one parking space.
I just went through that last night and there was a question from the attorney as to whether or not the B4 regs should be changed to B4 and B4A regs. And the B4 regs specifically state efficiency in one bedroom.
Right.
And the B4A regs show one bedroom and two bedrooms.
Right. Right. And unfortunately, the parking is, was really a carryover from the B4. But luckily, it says to provide at least one parking space. I would have hoped that the prior planning board would have done two, two-bedroom units. A one-bedroom or an efficiency only had to have one parking space in the, in the B4. But these, these were approved with one parking space, the two-bedroom units. So, and that's done, obviously, that approval is done. But we do have some leeway in there. But it might be better to clean the language up just to kind of say that, you know, if you're gonna use the two-bedroom, it's a, you know, it's a, it's two parking spaces. Because we all know that it doesn't, you know, you know, and 55 is, you know, is not, you know.
It's the new 40.
Yeah, because it was 62.
Yes.
Which is kind of, which is kind of counter to aging, right? The senior was dropped down to 55 for this housing when it used to be 62 in the B4. So it's unlikely, you know, that means I would have given up my car last year. It's not going anywhere. And so they're gonna come back in. So that's just so you guys have a heads up. And that's likely gonna be like a six-unit senior housing project with parking. Well, I, I hope so. I mean, the, the, the way the approvals were done, the first floors were all reserved for retail to have interaction for the building with the street.
Right.
Unfortunately, it didn't quite go that way. The code enforcement, in the medical building, they were approved all the way to the ground floor. They took the additional floors, so there's no interaction with the square and the buildings are all, you know, the windows are all whitened out. I reminded Matt of that. But obviously, it's the property manager, the property construction manager. But that's obviously, you know, we, we approved that, But that's obviously, you know, we approved that, the code enforcement approved that, so they're in there. But I said, "I would hate to see that happen on building one, too." You know, because unfortunately, what is a success, which is tenants and, you know, rented space, doesn't look that way from the street, you know? And it's, and we don't have anything in our code with respect to class obstruction.
It's coming.
It's coming, yes, I know, thank you, thank you very much, lots of stuff are coming. But right now, so it's, and this is before us now, so, okay?
Is the change in age a statewide thing, or is it just for this project?
I don't know, you know, senior housing is a state code. I mean, so it does come from the state code. But it's funny that it would come down that up, right? Because, I mean, you know, that's not really the way we're feeling, and medical care and, you know, longevity. So, I mean, but, yeah, they went from, ours was always 62, and then this was dropped down to 55.
So it's legitimate.
It's what?
It's a legitimate change on their behalf.
Well, with respect to state code?
Yeah.
I'd have to look, actually, I'm not, I don't know.
Seems strange.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a pretty early age to say seems, right?
I mean, I'd love to retire now, but it's gonna happen.
Exactly, all right, thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
We have nothing from zoning. Larry, are you ready, or you wanna wait? Need a breather?
Yeah, give me a second, I just want to go to the county.
Town of full sense.
As I reported last month, the town hall we're renovating, as I indicated, elevator shaft is 100% completed. As indicated, also, too, we found that tin ceiling upstairs in the courtroom. We are gonna decide to restore it. So it's gonna be really nice when we get done. Costs a little bit of money, but we think it was worth the investment. As I said, we had to move all the air handlers and everything else. All that work has been completed. Most of the interior framing is completed. Roughing the plumbing, electrical, AV, and data right now. Installation and sheetrock is scheduled to start early April. We're also possibly looking to put a new highway garage up at the, up on the Fischka Road as well. Haven't 100% determined if we're gonna do it this year or not. We're looking into it, looking at our finances. If you go by there, you can see some digging getting out of the bank. We want to do a little test there to see what kind of lands, if anything, is there right now. But if we do this, it'll be, go off the rip down half the garage, build a new half, rip down the old half, other half, and build a new half on it. If we do this, it's gonna be probably two, three phases.
Why are you doing it?
That building is not very good up there, that garage up there, it's in pretty bad shape.
Pretty bad, meaning?
It's, well, you know, we, right now, you know, the office is upstairs. That, that part has been condemned for a long, long time, can't use the upstairs. And that's why you have that trailer outside.
Right.
And the actual garage itself is, I think it's like 60, 70 years old, it's old, you know, so.
So we.
It's time, it's time for a new one. So, again, it's not 100% sure if we're gonna do it. We're looking at all our options as well. We honored two Eagle Scouts, Guy Cervone and Alex Masonic, the overnight honor meeting. And I would say this is a big accomplishment for these two young men. Over the past several years, there's been quite a few Eagle Scouts in Phillips Town. I think probably like five or six over December, three or four years. So it seems to be getting, scouting seems to be pretty popular here in Phillips Town, which is nice. As I mentioned last month, we had two openings on our planning board. We interviewed six very qualified candidates, and will probably make a decision later on this week. We also had a person named Owen Borda from the US Census Bureau came to speak to us, gave his short presentation. It was very good, it's very, and I, we encourage everyone to do the census. The census is gonna be starting relatively soon, probably like next week sometime. So you should be getting something in your mail. So please, take the effort and do it, because it's very important that everyone gets counted in our, in our country every 10 years. Regarding the coronavirus, I haven't really heard too much from Putnam County. As far as I know, there's no cases in Putnam County at this particular time, but I'm sure that's gonna change. Hopefully not, but I think we have to plan for that. Just use common sense, as everyone's saying, wash your hands, sneeze and so forth like that, cover your nose, blow your nose into a cake or a dip or something like that. So just use good common sense, thank you.
Nothing from Mr. Stark disagree with you? Would you agree?
A fire company?
Very long.
Yeah, we're getting reports now, this is great, yeah, that's great. Chief Tom Marigan, this Fire Matic report for last month is 11 calls for the month of February, three EMS assists, five activated fire alarms, one gas leak, one mutual aid for standby, one elevator emergency. And there's a building maintenance report from the firehouse. The new ceiling tiles were put up in the meeting room, and the lights were replaced in the meeting room. Also, they sent something to me, I got an email today. The fire company is in need of volunteers. And if anyone's thinking of becoming a volunteer or emergency responder, they need to contact the fire company, and they'll, they'll put you to work. I mean, not, everything has to necessarily be a firefighter or, or emergency responder. They, they have other needs as well. So they'll take any, anyone from the community that's interested in helping them out. What they wrote here is, "Being a volunteer, emergency responder is about one thing. It's not what you look like, what degree you have, or where you come from, it's about heart. If you've got a heart to serve this community in a way that few can, you've got everything we need." So contact the Cold Spring Fire Company, you know where they are, on Main Street.
So you know whether or not the lights in the meeting room were changed from motion-activated?
That I don't know. I don't, I don't think they would change the switches, I think they're just changing the fixtures in the drop ceiling. So the switches would remain motion-activated, I guess.
Well, the switches are on-off.
Yep.
But the lights themselves, I think, are motion-activated.
Well, I think the switches have on-off, I mean, motion sensors on, the ones in the meeting room do. But I don't know for sure.
Okay.
Okay, advisory, we don't have, Chamber of Commerce is here?
Good evening. So we've got a couple announcements. We've formalized our April awards ceremony dinner. It's gonna be on the April 30th, and we invite everyone to come to it. And last year, Mayor Marin made a beautiful presentation and speech for the James Lovell Award, and we would love to have you do that if you are interested. So that's April 30th at 6:00 PM till 9:00.
And where is that?
That's gonna be at St. Mary's Church this year. So we're organizing it, we're doing a little bit greater effort, and gonna try and organize it and include local business for the catering. So that's this year's event. We are getting ready for the tourism season. We're gearing up with the visitor center. We usually open it around May 31st. We may open it sooner, just because the weather has been so nice. It was really busy last weekend. So we wanna check with the village and see when you guys want to or are able to open the public restrooms. I think as soon as you can, they will be used and would be greatly appreciated by the public. We have spoken to Putnam County Transportation Department about the trolley. They have reported that they do intend to take our recommendations in terms of the schedule and the route and the stock locations. And we did pass along the request that the new trolley vehicles are smaller in scale. So that has been shared with them. And we just basically expressed that they would get more support from the community if that were the case. And then the last one is that we, you know, are really excited to see the benches return. We had such a warm winter that if they had been there all year, people would have used them. But it's great to see them back, especially so early in the season. One request we would make, and it's on behalf of one of our members, is that the benches out front of Hudson Hills are replaced back in their location. And we totally understand that it's a congested spot in the sidewalk, and it gets very busy. I do tend to cross the road to walk down the street to get to work on those weekend days when it's busy. But I think from, from our perspective, the benches serve especially seniors who are standing out waiting for their tables, and removing them doesn't necessarily make less congestion. It just provides no seating for the people who are sitting there waiting. So we would respect the request that things go back to Hudson Hills.
So you want them back at Hudson Hills on the sidewalk?
Where they've been in past years, same location.
It's, it's a real problem with them on the sidewalk. You can't get past them.
That place is bottlenecked there, and I don't see a lot of senior citizens there. And I walk down there all the time, and I have to fight my way through there almost every weekend. And this is one way that, and it's, if you have, if you have the benches there, you have a couple of feet that you keep away from the curb. Then you have the bench, which is a couple of feet. Then you have people's legs that are out there, and then you have everybody standing there. And it just bottlenecks that area. It's one of the smaller areas in the, I explained to all this to Bob on the phone, and I know, you don't want to hear that either, but I think that they should stay where the way they are for now, and see if it makes any impact. If it's still congested and nothing, then, as I told Bob, then, you know, we can reconsider. But I think that it's one of the spots. Also, down, I had asked Bugsy down in front of the Foundry not to put that one there either. Jeff keeps moving his tables out farther and farther, and there's less and less place for people to walk down there. And then that's another thing that the, you know, the vendors that are selling stuff are doing now. People with tables keep adding more, and they keep pushing them out to the sidewalk. And then we're the bad guys when we say, "Can you move those back," or whatever. Hudson, Hudson House did it, I mean, they had one set of tables, and then they moved a second set of tables out. You know, Pizza Place is doing it, we have signs and stuff that are outside now, past the, past these stoops. You know, it's like, there's a lot of people there on the weekend, and the weekends are starting to turn into every day. Like, I guarantee you this, this summer, unless this whole virus, you know, sets everyone as staying home, it's gonna be a daily thing, not just the weekends. That's my feeling, I don't know if anyone else is. I directed Bugsy to not, not put them there.
You know, I mean, I've, I've been through this a couple of times, even in front of Pizza Place, the tables keep coming on farther, you know, coffee shop, we had to go and tell them to get the sign off the middle of the street. Hudson Hills, and, and, God bless you, you've got a really good business. But walking up that street on the weekend is really, you can't get by, and people, you know, people who are your customers or who are waiting for seats are oblivious to the fact that people need to walk up and down the sidewalk. They stand there and they talk, and they don't, they don't consider moving. You know, and so it's just, you have to, like, for me to walk, you have to either ask people to move, you know, and yell, "Excuse me," or you gotta walk in the street.
Why don't you tell them, the people out, go down the other side of the street there, Kimball Avenue?
I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's, you know, that's.
I mean, just to ask them to do that.
Waiting, that's well, the boss customers.
They're, they're suggested to get their name and their number, and they're suggested to know about town, and we'll call them. And, you know, kindly, passion, so they, on time for their, but they, can't say they, they listen, because there are people, they just do what they want, and they're oblivious to everything. And I, I understand, because I walked up and down that street, the sidewalk, and quite often, I'm walking around in the street. But if we're gonna talk about the benches, then I want to talk about the tree. I was not in favor of the tree, because then the tree comes the fence around the tree, which people are then gonna be even more blocked off, and potentially tripping over the tree as they back into it because somebody happens to be walking down the sidewalk. It's just unfortunate, in my opinion, that we're singled out.
See, that's what I, I really want to make it clear, you are not being singled out.
Okay.
You have an incredibly successful business that everyone goes to, and they all congregate there. That's not so, being selective, Bob, it's like, it's just a fact, and that's, that's how it is. There's no one else in this village that has a business like yours where people will go, even if there's a restaurant, when Jim was opening the next store, they were lined up at your place, not going there. You got a great reputation, and it's not being selective. I definitely do not want to hear that.
I mean, I have, I have, on a number of occasions, spoken to the policeman on weekends, and told, asked them to please get to the pizza parlor, and asked them to move their tables in, get to the coffee shop, and they'll remove their sign in. You know, I mean, the crowds in front of, you get the crowds of human people, they get the tables and the signs. Everything, you know, there are regulations, and for their reasons, there are regulations as to how far in. And they get, you know, they have had policemen knocking on their doors on a regular basis because I've sent them there, you know, asking them to move their stuff in, so.
Well, this is not my turn to talk, this is James.
Yeah, I mean, from the chamber's standpoint, we totally respect and appreciate the village's concerns about safety and trying to keep the flow on the sidewalk clear. And Bob's one of the more considerate businesses who really do try and encourage their patrons, too. Like you said, Mullabout will call you. But this is part of a larger issue of our tourism traffic growing, where it's, trying to discourage it, we could do, but it's probably not going to stop. And so finding ways that support it without being, without causing greater congestion, I think maybe that's what you were trying to do with removing the bench. And I, I like the idea that maybe give it a break and see if the congestion changes at all with the removal of the bench. But if it doesn't, we would request that maybe the bench moves back, because I don't know that it will make any difference in terms of how much congestion happens there because it is a successful restaurant, and people are waiting for tables. And having seating there is a public service to the people who are just congregating in this place. It's public streets.
But there's also, there's people that walk the streets, there are residents, there are people that are not eating there. There are people that, you know, and if this is, this is where this bad, whether it's side effects or effects of, of the tourism, you know, industry, and, and something should be done. I don't know how you, how you alleviate that. This is one move, but to say he's got a successful business, and what else can we do? And that's part of tourism, we're just gonna live with that?
It's part of an issue of a successful main street. I mean, there are main streets across America that are going shuttered. Our, our main street, we have businesses that actually are able to stay open and not close for many, many years, including great businesses like The Hardware, that actually are just focused on serving locals. So I would just like to keep that in mind, that we are, you know, like, the businesses, this is a main street, it's a business district.
And business district, that's all well said, but there's a safety issue, and there's pedestrian traffic, and it's also making something more welcoming. And having people where you can't even walk through the street, I don't think is something that's very inviting. Unless you just think that you should just be, you know, that's part of it, and just walk through it, and we're successful and live with it. I don't want to do, I don't want to be part of that.
There's also congestion issues, just driving out of that street, trying to take a right or a left out of there, and the people are on the street, they're, you can't see what's coming. It's bad enough with the parked cars, you can't see what's coming. But when the people are, like, on that corner, the east corner of Kimball, you can't really see what you're doing, you have to creep out, and then it's.
These are, these are complaints, though, they're not things that can be solved. There'll never be a wide in the sidewalk.
Well, have you ever thought about solving, like, maybe how people, get a thought. If you have a solution, let me hear it.
Well, just, just an idea, and it's maybe shot down in a heartbeat. From the side says, "No parking from here to the corner," okay? There's one parking spot. What would happen if we, like, close that off on the weekends? Where it gives the people another, what is it, seven, eight feet?
That space is there for fire trucks and for emergency vehicles to be able to get out of there.
Well, if a car's parked there, it's the same.
But we get a corner, so obviously.
He means in front of that.
You mean, make it two spaces where there's no parking?
Yes, it's just.
And then people would stand in the road.
They stand in the road right now, Marie.
I know.
But you've expanded your business also with tables on the side and serving from the, the public right of way now. And so that's even more, on the side of your building.
On Kimball?
Yeah.
Well, it was grandfather day.
I know, but you're serving off of public, of a public street.
That could also be used for seating.
The tables are there, and you're serving off of the, of a public right of way.
Well, I don't know if we can even own a business, but it's not cheap these days, and it's just a way to turn a couple more tables to help pay for insurance, labor costs, et cetera. I'm not gonna go there, but.
Well, that could be a seating area for people.
I understand this, it's just like, it's, it seems like, you know, that, that, all that's said is, but nothing's taken into consideration from the village's point of view. Food Town, we can't, you know, in order to have the restaurant there, that means they can, they need to put everything outside. They need to keep encroaching more and more. They need this, they need that, or whatever. And we're supposed to say, "Well, you know, it's a restaurant, and you've bought behind the building." And, and, you know, there's all these, you know, things, but it's, there's never, like, this is what you bought, this is what you have, and we have to take in consideration the well-being of the village.
I mean, we're not discouraging tourism by taking the bench away, because tourists are not just tourists who are eating at your shop, tourists are tourists who try to walk down the street to go to the next shops.
And the other thing is, the bench is up, like, 10, 20, 20 feet?
It will be used.
I mean, it's not like it was taken out of there. I mean, there's, there's a bench 20 feet up there. It's not, it's like downhill walk, you know, if you're waiting. It's not like we, there's no other bench anywhere on the street. There's one across the street in, in front of Olive, uh, Blue Olive, Olive Garden, sorry.
We don't have any Olive Gardens here.
My mother loves them.
Without picking any more bones, that's all from the favor of ours today. And we'll try and think of some other ways to solve these congestion issues.
What are the stops that the trolley will be using? What is traffic there?
They are the Waterfront Bandstand, the.
Metro North.
Metro North. The, in front of the memorial on the church line.
I thought we said no to that.
I thought we did, too.
I thought we said no.
We can, you know, talk to Vinnie and see if that's, you know, something that he can change. But we're trying to find something at the top of the hill. And if you have other suggestions, a better place that, I mean, the, the church is not gonna allow us to use their lot during their days of service. So if you have another suggestion, we would gladly take it.
The problem is, the width of the trolley just does not permit it to safely pour anywhere on Main Street and anywhere on most of the side streets, including Morris Avenue, which I suspect you're gonna say this, the fourth stop is in front of the library.
One's in the, in front of the library, and one is at the Chestnut Ridge Senior.
Yes, Chestnut Ridge is.
So those are the main stops in the village of Phillips Town.
We had said no to the library and no to St. Mary's. So you've, you came to us, we said no, and, and you, and yet you took those stops to Putnam County, and, and that's what they're planning on, that's a problem. You come and ask, we say no.
And the biggest problem at the, at the traffic light is that, it's like, if you don't have a designated area, which, which we're not gonna dedicate, because from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, the loop will now be two hours?
Yes.
Okay, so for two hours, that would be, you know, the, the, the stop's gonna be for like five minutes or something, at the most, and then there'll be no one in that spot for the most, for another two hours.
It does come back through the village and stop at the.
But it's not coming back from the village and coming to that side of the street.
Right.
So it's two hours, so, you know, that's good, and, you know, precious parking is, so. And then if there's not a reserved spot there, they're just gonna park in, in the middle of Main Street.
Right.
And, and people, these senior citizens will try to be getting on. and, and people, these senior citizens will try to be getting on the trolley and, and there's a green light and there's people coming up and down the street and, you know, that's a, it's a problem. I don't know why.
We don't have a space to dedicate.
Yeah. I think that a whole lot of progress, first of all, yes, you all did turn down the stops as you described them. I think that a whole lot of progress, however, has been made in the changes that have been accomplished. I don't consider it a finished product at this point. For instance, I just learned today that St. Mary's only has services every two Sundays. So two Sundays in the summer, it won't be a problem at all to turn in there. And I think that we have more work to do on this. I think that, as I recall, Eliza sent you a letter saying that, you know, what we felt we could accomplish at this point because the Chamber is answerable to its membership and there's a strong contingent on the Chamber who feels that removing the trolley totally from Main Street is bad for business. Now, there are, as we also had discussed, there's the Haldane Parking Lot, which is not all that far, you know, for a Chamber stop. You can go past the top part and go down the street on High Street and you're on Main Street. So I would hate for you to think that we were unresponsive because we weren't. There are certain things that we have accomplished and I think would, and represent a significant improvement and that we are gonna continue to try and massage this, okay? And I, but I do say, I do think that Eliza's letter indicated what we could practically do at this particular moment in terms of our correspondence with the county. So I don't, again, it's, it's, I think progress has been made, respect has been paid and I don't think that this particular issue deserves any anger, okay?
Am I registering anger?
You are.
Sorry.
Yeah. But you know, you are.
Well, it's frustration.
It's frustration.
It's frustration when you're sitting down and we're talking. Well, first of all, we have to go back a little because, you know, sometimes my reaction, do you think we're just, you know, at the moment? But we, we had conversations or, or there were schedules set before the village was even, even notified or talked to. Things were set up and, and pamphlets were given out with stops on them and we were not involved. So that's part of my frustration. And then, and then we have a meeting with you guys, say we don't want them there and you go to the county and, and now you're telling us this is one of the stops.
But it's not, it's not those two, it's not those two actions with nothing in between. And yes, initially it was badly handled, that we, we simply published a map that we thought would be helpful of a route that for all of, we understood, you all, it has been operating here for over a decade.
But no, no, it was, it was stops where there were gonna be signs that were designated stops. That has never been the case and they never stop outside here.
But the first step was simply to get a map so people knew where the thing went. Subsequent to that, we took on the issue of an identity campaign for the trolley and the proposal that we have stopped so people knew where they could get it. I mean, this is, you know, this, it's mass transportation. This is not like a cherry on the, you know, on the cake. If it doesn't arrive on time, it's not gonna work and if people don't know it, it's not gonna work. So we were trying to modify what we thought was an existing condition that had been allowed to go on for a very long time and to rationalize what could be if it were rationalized. In addition, not just for tourists, but for connecting village citizens with the various cultural, educational institutions that are available to them. And it's as rich here as it is anywhere in the Hudson Valley, probably richer here than anywhere in the Hudson Valley. So that was the intention. If it was not diplomatically handled or courteously handled at the beginning, we apologize for that. But it wasn't an attempt to ignore the village, okay? And since that time, informing the village and working with the village, we believe that significant improvements are underway and they're not over with, okay?
So, so when you say that, you know, we've given the plan and that Putnam County's accepted that and one of the stops there, what do I, what am I, how do I interpret that?
Well, you can interpret that as it's on paper, listen, it's on paper now and we are, can continue to work with that. All right, if it's, if it's a bad situation, we don't want it either, all right? And there's new information, as I said, I just learned today that two weekends a year, there are no religious services. I mean, a month. There are no religious services at St. Mary's. So I, I think it can be worked out so that you all are comfortable with your safety responsibilities and that the Chamber members are comfortable that the trolley is serving their interest as well as other people's interest. I, I honestly don't think it's that high a mountain, okay?
Would you like to snap a flower? Going to the beginning of the agenda.
Evening, really sorry for being late on the other side of the county, the legislators over there. For the month of February, we had fifty-one calls of service for a total for two months, a hundred and two calls for service. We had six, let me backtrack on that. We had thirty-two parking summonses and we had sixty-one moving summonses. For a total of ninety-three summonses for the month of February and year to date, we're at a hundred and ninety-nine. During last month, we had four arrests. We had one for criminal mischief, which was damaging personal property. We had criminal possession of a controlled substance. Somebody was arrested during a investigation in a car, a car, a vehicle stop. An individual did have some drugs in the car in plain view. The officer did make the arrest, so that's why we have the criminal possession charge there, two twenty oh three in the criminal law. The A U O was in unauthorized use for another arrest and the last arrest was for a registration violation, insurance lap. With that, the officer went to place the, supposed to escort the gentleman in for paperwork and processing. He decided to fight the officer, so he was arrested for O G A, which is obstruction of government administration and existing arrest on another vehicle.
That's even lower than a truck, right?
A truck, yes. Couple of quick things I wanted to talk about also, the coronavirus. As of right now, we have N ninety-five masks upstairs that have been at the officer's disposal. We have also gloves. I got a whole, the county had a, a training session on Monday for all first responders. I got a summary on that. Basically, my officers, if it comes over as a call for somebody coughing sick or whatever, they're to wait before they go inside the resident, wait for the EMS. When EMS goes in fully garbed, because they have their own procedures, they will follow EMS in if they need assistance on any calls of coughing, fever, or anything to that, that aspect. If it's a other call of any other assistance, they will immediately go in, as in a heart failure, difficulty, a proportation is still going with the A E D, the first responders will go in. I just thought to know on that. An update on the evidence that we had, not an obfuscation anymore, Bill Podolsky doing. It's coming along swimmingly. Everything is getting documented and it's coming along very well. We have a lot of old stuff that we're gonna have to go through. There's a lot of some old evidence that needs to be disposed of, which I will do as per state law. The cases that go back to the eighties and that's, you know, evidence that saw a little bit of narcotics and stuff like that. We have a lot of missing, found property that's up there from the years past. We're trying to figure out what we're supposed to do with those as per state law. Are we gonna be able to put them out for auction? I mean, some of them are fifteen, twenty years. There's nothing, there's, there's no name to them, attached jewelry, just somebody found here or there. We're trying to figure that out. There's also some, some monies that, found money over the years that's up there. I believe we're up to about, I wanna say six, six hundred or seven hundred dollars that's been sitting upstairs and nobody's collected over the years. Let's come in and say I lost my wallet or money that was just found in the street. So we're figuring out what we can do with that. Just to go over the fire that happened yesterday on nine D. Call Spring did respond. Officer Baker was there. He was assisting the Putnam County Sheriff for closing nine D off the traffic while the emergency responders put out the fires that started, I wanna say halfway up nine D to the chalet. The chalet was the, the, the main center for the ambulance and stuff like that and first responders. So we responded to that. We were out on that for a couple hours. And then he got relieved by the four twelve as Officer Reese. I think he, they kind of opened up nine D at that point. Other than that, I have nothing else. I'm just, I, it's on the agenda. I reached out to Nico DeVal and Nico was more than happy to come back with us this year. So I have that on the, on the schedule, so you guys will approve it a little bit later. He's a great asset and I'm just grateful he wants to come back.
Thanks Larry. Thank you Larry. Matt?
So start with the water. Reservoirs are ninety-six point seven, just about where they were last year, a little bit less. Coronal usage is down a little bit more than half a percent. I think that's due to the beer. The bacteria for all last month, including the additional samples, were all found in good standing. For the water plant, we've redesigned and moved around some of the chemicals in the chemical storage room, including relocation of the sodium permanganate from the raw building up to the main. Hard pipe the piping to transfer chemicals from the bulk containment to the day rocks just for a safety and ease of filling. We did get the survey back from Beatty and Watson this week for the D E P project and looking like we are going to do the first flush of the year, the week of April sixth through the tenth. Questions?
Doug, you give us a heads up for when we're doing the flushing, right?
Yeah.
Because we definitely gotta put something out there.
Yeah, I think that's when the school is off to for spring recess, so I think it kind of lines up. I think that's the way it's been done in the past, so figure that with the week.
When, Quentin, or what, for, for the fire, were you hooked up to the hydrants, is that right?
They did yesterday.
Why is that?
I did not know that was not the normal thing to do. Marie was informing that before the meeting started, so I'm gonna reach out to the fire department and see about that, move forward in the future.
Yeah, I can, I can answer some of that. I was actually, I'm with North Island Fire Department, so basically we have tankers that have to be called in from all over the county to, because we run out of water on the tanker, so we go to the, they have certain hydrants that they, that the fire department has set up where it could be a quick hookup, fill the tanker up and get up to the fire. So we, that's what happened yesterday.
I'd assume that, yeah.
Yeah, we had to fill up our, our tanker a couple of times yesterday on High Street. And the reason they didn't use the one down over on Northern, because it would've been kind of off main, it's just the way the water flows. You know, the water flows straight down Main Street.
Right, you have to reduce the valves and everything.
If you go to the other one, it has to go up and over the hump and it would took a lot more time for the fill of the truck. So that's why that specific hydrant was chosen, because the gravity and the water goes straight down and it's quicker to fill up.
The question Larry is why not pump the water from the river?
At the time, that was a suggestion, depending on how long the fire was gonna go. The M T A was actually gonna bring in a backhoe and dig under the tracks so that the service would not be, would be halt, you know, stopped for a long period of time. Could we have to have the hoses go up and over the tracks? They were actually gonna dig a hole and go under if we were really gonna be there for a length of, a longer length of time than we were. That was a consideration.
In the future, why, why isn't that then? I mean, certainly we were fortunate that we've had a rainy winter and reservoirs were at capacity. But we used up precious capacity on Monday when going down to the boat, the boat ramp, the boat club ramp. It would think, it seems to me, could have been as efficient and as effective as hooking up to the hydrant at High Street.
The issues going down to the boat club, you have to take into effect that, is it high tide? If it's low tide, is issues are getting, even though we have screens on the tankers that have to pump the water out of, out of the river to get into the tanker, you know, if it's low tide there, trying to get, you know, trying to get a tanker down there and the access and the quickness to the fire scene. What we try to do is in, in any, any fire, whether it be up on East Mountain where, where I, I'm at or anything like that, you try to go to the nearest, nearest pond, you know, a bigger, bigger water is better. So if you have like a reservoir, you have like, like you said, a huts of river. It's just in proximity of where the fire was, a way to hook up really quickly, instead of going in and out of the boat club down there. And again, whether it would be, whether it be high tide or low tide, if you go down in low tide sometimes, you have to physically really go all the way down to get, you know, to back the truck up, to get the hose and the screen and everything else into, into the, into the, into the river. Only believe the river was right there. If the tracks weren't there, that would've been the perfect spot. But other than that, we, we thought about doing it. We were sitting there, we were going over the whole scene, if we were gonna be there again for any longer period of time, we were gonna do that. Go right up off to the, to the river.
My understanding is that the bulk of the fire was north of the tunnel.
The actual fire, the original fire started right in the middle of the Cola Flax, which is nine D, which is between the end of the village, nine D and Fair Street and the tunnel. That actually lit up and that was spreading quickly because of the wind that was coming off, coming off there. So it actually was going up, so that's where we had a bolt, that's where we, my firehouse was stationed. And then they had, going north, they needed help up there also because the fire actually did jump nine D and it actually burnt about five or six of the hikers' cars and that's what happened when it went up into, into, into the, into Mount Beacon and also up a little bit on Breakneck. So they were, they were on that, I mean, as you saw pictures on Facebook, it was pretty bad last night.
I did. My, my issue with that is that, is that we're fighting Dutchess County fires with Cold Spring water. That's been treated and is potable and is kind of a waste of Cold Spring taxpayers' resources to benefit another county. There are no hydrants north of the tunnel, anywhere?
Not, not that I know of. Again, this is not my district, my district is North Island. But when we come down, we ask, we do the adjoining fire department if they, because they, we were called in, they needed help. They tell us where, where they fill up or where they have their plan to fill up and that's where we fill up. Unfortunately, because some municipalities have hydrants, dry, that's called a dry hydrant.
Yeah.
There's some that don't. And it's just really, it's, it's an unfortunate thing that happens to be the Cold Spring water this time, but you know what? God forbid we get a fire in Cold Spring and we need other people to come here and we need to draw water from somewhere else. So it's all mutual aid and we're all together.
I get it.
Trying to help out. I, I understand what you're coming from on that too, but.
We have a dry hydrant system. Comes right out by the public bathrooms. All you gotta do is hook a ho, a pumper up down by the dry hydrant by mumus, run your hose up, hook it to the west side of the tracks, pumps it right up to the dry hydrant out in front of the bathrooms. Been there for years.
You know, I'm, I'm sure we're just hyper aware of it because this is the second major fire there in less than a year, so.
And there's gonna be more. I mean, just the more people that use it and the more things that go on with dry weather or whatever, it's gonna happen. So as, as a responding firefighter from another, like I said, another district to come in here, we go by what the district, the firehouse here says. Hey, listen, this is where we get our water. If they were to say go down to the dry hydrant down by the, you know, I know that it's down, it's down by the, the bathrooms, we would be happy to do it, no problem. But still, you're drawing the water from.
The river.
The river would've been a little better than where we got it from.
Fifty?
How's that, Matt? Before I get through the wastewater. Yeah, everything at the wastewater plant was pretty good through the last month. Took in six point two four with an average of two hundred and fifteen thousand gallons a day. B O D T S S was good. The liquid sludge hauled off site last month was a little bit more, but that tends to happen as the weather gets warmer and solids build faster. Last meeting, we had the Campbell Lab Pump Station alarm panel upgrade and the relocation of the existing for Lower Main S R A. Just wondering if that was ever fully approved. And then we have the valve replacement. This has been trying to be rescheduled for quite some time now, finally getting hopefully done tomorrow. So that'll be all wrapped up.
I have a question from Matt.
Sure.
And from the board. We're all aware of how, how our water can be from time to time. As we've established this evening, that I have a restaurant. Quite often the water is so not palatable. Uh, quite often the water is so, uh, not palatable, at least by your eye looking at it, that over the years I've had to buy water for my customers. And on top of that expense, I've had hundreds of dollars in expense replacing filters for, for the building, for ice makers, for soda machines, for coffee makers, espresso machines. These are all things that, uh, you know, the filters are there obviously to design to filter contaminants and, and debris from competing upon the equipment. And some of these filters are extremely expensive. Fifty, seventy-five, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty dollars a filter. And I, it taught me, it's like, I pay a lot in a water bill every month. And on top of that, I have these other expenses, and do I have any recourse coming to you? You expect to get some result or some compensation for this? If you had to give a person a glass of water and they said, is this drinkable? It's embarrassing, it's embarrassing. Um, and of course you assure them that it's totally drinkable. It, it, it's very, um, embar, it's very much an embarrassment. And do I have any recourse with the village upon getting some sort of reimbursement on filters? I guess that's my question.
I would say no.
But why would that be?
I would think the first thing is, is ask that your water be tested by Matt to see if there's...
He's saying it has been, and, but it's brown, and he can't serve it that way.
It clogs the filters, okay? And, um, it's...
So I think what we could do is if you do have recourse, then it would mean that everybody in the village would get filters and then whatever millions that costs.
Yep, I don't know what everybody else is gonna do. I happen to spend more than the average village resident, okay? I use more than them and I pay my just, my question is, why do I spend all this money for water? That, it's, I don't think other municipalities have those issues.
Yes, they do.
Well, how do they, how do they address it? It's new to me, this is not a third world country.
When we had, when we had Gogo Pops, I was having to replace filters every, every year for the espresso maker, the coffee maker.
Yes.
And the potable water thing.
Right.
Um, now that I'm in Wappingers, every six months, for the same equipment, for the same amount of volume. So, so what we have here in Cold Spring is actually much better than what it is elsewhere. So, and I also knew this to be the case in other municipalities in other states. Cause the water's hard here.
Yeah, but it's very brown sometimes.
Well, the only thing I can really say about that is what the purchase of the DR nine hundred at the end of November, it gives us a better capability of treating what's coming in, so we know exactly what it is and trying to maintain it. Yesterday with the brush fire and the sudden opening of the hydrants, definitely disturbed everything. That wasn't anything to do with water quality, I understand that. We are gearing up for the hydrant flush at the end of the, the month.
Right.
Hopefully that'll get done, I couldn't tell you what has happened beforehand, how much sediment is removed and how everything plays out after a hydrant flush. I'm kinda curious to see about how it happens myself, but with the new equipment that we have, like I said, Greg did it for twenty-two years. He had a lot of stuff locked up here that I didn't have moving into it, so we gotta get the equipment to move forward and do that. I mean, the water that we're pumping out of the treatment plant on daily basis is in really good standing. It's the system, but I mean unless the system is up, hit, flushed out regularly, routinely, depending on reservoir levels, whether it can or can't be during that time of year, that's pretty much my going forward, to attack and see what happens with that.
I've not had a, a business in any other municipality, and so it came, it hit me, kind of break like, whoa, do I have any recourse? So now, I know, so it was worth asking.
Thank you, Matt. Building department, uh, new building permits, uh, nine, building permits issued, seven. Operating permits issued, zero, dumpster permits issued, one, COs issued, three. Record searches completed, three. Referrals generated, HDRV, two, and planning, one application, and permit fees collected for the month of January, four thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Record search collected, two hundred and twenty-five, for a total of January of four thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars. Brings you up, Bugs.
Good evening, everyone. Let's see, for month of February, garbage was forty-one tons, recycling was sixteen-five. Um, we removed twenty-three benches from Tots Park, McConville Park, nine eleven Memorial, Davenport Memorial, and other locations around the village to be completely refurbished at the highway department. Uh, Putnam County Corrections Officer Matt Amato was on site with two inmates to assist with painting of all these benches. Uh, we filled potholes on Belvedere and Hamilton with a yard and a half of item four. Chipped up all the Christmas trees, um, installed new ceiling tile at the meeting room of the firehouse with some help of the volunteers, and painted over graffiti in the subway, continued pothole repair and street cleaning. We installed new rear brakes and fuel tank straps on the ninety-seven F three fifty. Replaced an air canister on the ninety-three International Garbage Truck, and had to remove the fuel tank from the ninety-seven case backhoe in order to cut the bottom and one side off due to the metal rotting. We welded a new bottom and side on the tank, repainted it, and reinstalled it on the backhoe. For the coming month of March, we are looking to clean streets, repair curving issues on Main Street, inspect all catch basins in the village and get a jump on the pavers on Main Street.
Lawn refuse.
Excuse me?
Lawn refuse, garbage, uh...
Yes.
When, why, you start doing that?
Uh, I spoke with Jeff today, we are looking to start the first and third Wednesday of April. We do it twice in April, twice in May, then we will go back to once a month. Um, I just needed a week or two because I have to get together with you guys with a write-up to try and get brush, when it's put out. To be easier to pick up, cause unfortunately, we've been throwing it in the garbage truck to bring it down to Wheel Abraider, cause it's taking us two days to go around the whole village with three guys to dump it in the back of a truck and then bring it over to Benedict.
And that's because frequently people put branches in the bags.
There is everything in plastic bags, prickers, branches, I mean, we got branches sticking this far out the side of the bag.
So you can't just dump the leaves?
You can't just dump it, it's, you end up ripping it, which is...
Yep, so yes, that would be most helpful if some, if somehow the village could make people aware that this is a problem.
Yeah, I'm gonna get together, um, talk to Jeff a little bit on how we can get it out to the residents, and hopefully within the next week or two, we'll have that out and be ready to start, uh, on the first Wednesday in April.
Please, thank you.
Okay?
Village bathrooms, they're the ones at the bottom, foot of main, can we open them up like, not this weekend, but the following?
Sure, not a problem.
Think we might still have some freezing there. Is the heat on in them?
It shouldn't be, I shut it off, so unless somebody's been in there sunsetting.
Stop down and check it.
Okay, I'll check it.
It seemed like it would be.
I'll check, I'll, I'll take a look tomorrow.
Alright, thanks.
Actually, I'll stop down.
Justice Court, uh, February monthly report, fines, forfeited va, is that where we're at? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, um, fines, forfeited vaals and civil penalties, four thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. Parking tickets, one and, one thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Civil fees, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Mandatory state surcharges, two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight, total eight thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. Let's see, Port Mayor and the Board. Anything from...
I just got one thing.
Okay.
I just wanted to recognize and thank Jeff Ty for helping us out with the, uh, trying to figure out our, our technical needs for, uh, the code update review, and, uh, we were discussing getting laptops and all that other stuff, so he, he actually did some work for pro bono to help figure us out stuff we might need, so just wanted to thank him for that.
So you're gonna come back to the Board with a recommendation?
Well, he's already sent some stuff to, uh...
He has, and then Jeff's sending, sent it to Anthony.
Dave and Jeff, and Jeff's sending it to Anthony.
Jeff is sending it to us?
To Anthony.
Has sent it to Anthony for, to take a look at what he was suggesting.
Ah, thank you.
Just advice really, what he's given, not a proposal.
Steve, could you spell this fellow's last name for me?
Uh, Jeff Ty, T I G H E.
That's what I had, thank you.
He's a resident of Cold Spring. Village.
I did receive a few emails, say, one from Putnam County, one from the governor's office and, uh, on the, uh, on coronavirus, and so, uh, I will have Jeff, I asked Jeff if he'd post them on our website, so, uh, there was, there was all types of information there, there's frequently asked questions, and so hopefully Jeff can get on there, or do you do that, friend, or?
No, Jeff does the website, I copy it to Facebook.
So, as Bobby said, there, right now there's no known cases in Putnam County, um, and they're gonna keep us posted, I think daily, with any updates, and, uh, so there were, there were a number of things, attachments, and if anyone's interested, hopefully Jeff can get them up tomorrow. Most of it's the usual stuff, how to, how to, how to protect yourself in a way, and I'm sure you've heard by now. Uh, let's see, where have we asked, oh, anything else from the Board? Okay, uh... Uh, was the hire parking enforcement, uh, Nico, um, do we want to do this tonight or figure, is it a fifteen an hour, just stick with that, or?
Yes, because that's what's on the books right now.
Right, okay. It's, I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve the hiring of, uh, of Nico De La Veila. Uh, once again, I think this will be his third year, he's great, he's nonstop, and, uh, really gets the job done, but he's believable actually. So I'll make that motion.
Second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next is Legion Fireworks, someone want to, uh...
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Legion Fireworks for the Community Day event in September.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Is this the same fireworks company that we've been using?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
What, what day is that in September?
So the Community Day, we, we couldn't secure the fireworks, so it's, uh, September fifth and rain date the sixth.
So it's a Sunday, Monday?
No, Saturday.
Saturday, Saturday, Labor Day weekend?
Yeah, Labor Day weekend. And, uh, we've secured the money from, once again, uh, old West, uh, old VFW is calling that. We do have a commitment from Magazino for the music, and waiting on M and T Bank for the other half of that. So things are moving along, we need to, maybe next meeting, so...
I, I thought we had, I asked Jeff to set that up, I'll, I'll ask him again.
Okay, you should put that on next. Uh, next is, uh, did we, did we fi, finish that one, sorry?
Yes.
We voted, okay, okay. Um, resolution, uh, zero five dash twenty twenty, authorizing, uh, mayor to sign the agreement with Putnam County Real Property to prepare taxes? What's that?
Don't remake that motion. I make a motion, authorize, and this would be a resolution, the verified dash twenty twenty, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with Putnam County Real Property to prepare the taxes, the village taxes. I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Balodow?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes. Uh, next is approved request for Memorial Day Parade, I'll make a motion to approve that. What's that?
Yeah, I'll give this, I have else, cause I have this.
I'll second. We have a second from Steve, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next we have, uh, approval request, Kids Fishing Day, um, at Cold Spring Reservoir. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, that day is May third, eight to four, it's a Sunday, May third, eight to four. And it's the Nelsigal Fishing Fur Club. Uh, next, uh, recruit, uh, quote for, approved quote for a new flooring for police department. I don't think in your packet, uh, there's two, but we did get another, uh, there was another estimate for seventy-six hundred dollars and fifty-six cents. Um, but that did not include the stairs, and those are the only ones that we're able to secure. So I think our policy is satisfied there, so I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Second from Lynn?
You okay?
Thank you.
All, our discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The, uh, yeah, just, uh, thank you to the Sheriff Department, the inmates are, however they're referred to, that came and did a painting, they did a really good job in the hallway, so. Thank you Larry for coordinating and thank, thank them for coming, they did, they did a really nice job.
Yeah, they did, we sent a letter over thanking them and, uh, that, they, you know, they did the police department last year, which did a great job, and the stairs, they did a great job, so I'm very happy.
Batches, batches bills.
Batches of bills. Um, I move to approve Bill's batch number fifty-four ninety-nine for a total amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second that, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, there's our approval of meetings, uh, trustee workshop, March third, two thousand and twenty, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, page two, there's a G missing off of the second, I guess, third paragraph, authorize send-in.
Send, no, that's correct.
It is? We don't use G's on the word send-in anymore?
I'm sorry, I, you're right.
Send-in.
No, you're right.
Kinda swanky.
I'll be sending.
I send it. Alright, that's it.
I will make a motion to accept the minutes as amended by trustee Balodow.
Eve Long.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, uh, trustee workshop meeting, March fourth, two thousand and twenty. I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's see, public comment? Yes, Brian?
One item on the fence condition over at the mayor's park, um, if I'm mistaken, you know, just, I apologize, but I thought at one point there was some thought of moving that fence because of the idea of improving the transit of pedestrians and hikers along Fair Street, and maybe moving it in enough space to give a park, I'm sorry, a sidewalk.
Yeah, that was, uh, part of the fjord trail.
Fjord Trail, right.
Fulltown was gonna be, uh, sponsor that portion of it, um, and then bids came in very high and they kinda dropped that, spent the money somewhere else, I believe, and, uh...
I don't know, they spent the money someplace else, but I know it was way too much.
And then, uh, the fjord, I don't think it's part of their plan now, I think with the fjord, the new fjord, uh, trail.
So depending on the price of this repaired ground and the fact that you're setting it, just might be time to look at that again, I don't know if it's even possible, but...
To do, uh...
If you're gonna be repairing the fence, just blew it, rebuild it.
I will basically repairing the gates going into the fence.
Just the gates, okay. Um, one more point, I'm sorry, the planning board is looking at twenty main, sorry, twenty of the boulevard for switching to a...
The Oak Campbell, let's see.
Yeah, to go over to a, from a residential to a mixed use. Is that a zoning change, is that, would that, they're...
No, they're, they're R three now.
It's accepted.
It's a use change. R three has an, has an accepted use. Any, any accepted use in R one, which is a single family residence, and then it goes on and identifies other uses that are acceptable in R three, and one of them is, I forget what it's called.
Tourist home?
Thank you, tourist home. Tourist home.
Adequate for a hotel.
And, and the problem is the number of rooms that they say exceeds what a tourist home in the code is authorized to have, and it gets to the point, five rooms is a hotel.
So maybe you just covered that earlier. So maybe you just covered that earlier.
Yes.
So it may bounce into another zoning.
No, no, it doesn't change the zone. The zoning is R three. The Campbell's seat has always been R three.
But in order to have a, what you just said there, it may need a different zoning.
No, no, no.
They would have to lower the amount of rooms to, if that is the case, to accommodate to comply.
As a tourist, as a tourist home. If they want it to be a hotel, which I think is, I'd have to go back, but I think that may be permitted in an R three zone, then they have to conform to all the New York State Uniform Codes for hotels.
I guess that's my question. The licensing and the insurance and the taxes paid.
So you need sprinklers, you need lighted exit signs, you need...
State requirements.
Yes, all state requirements.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A little over forty-five minutes.